Hello for the meeting. Please turn me from what believe. But leaving it's truly glad, United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty into justice for all.
Kim's gonna be on about seven. Laura's not with us tonight either. And I don't think did Mike jump in? I know you said he might be driving, so. Or traveling. See, do we have? Any citizen's statements or petitions? Just jump in there. Don't see anything here. What's happening? Twenty. Assuming this is just late, only it's twenty-two. Oh, there it is. Something, alright. No correspondence to the board. That I saw, so we have the ATM. Warrant review. So why don't we? Jack has asked that we take the items out of order, just because he has another meeting to get to. Jack, which article is that, is that one?
Gee. I just saw. Twenty-something or another. Here, I, I lost it already.
It's okay, hang on.
You sent it to me and I can't find it. I could find it if I look hard enough. Here it is.
Is it twenty-one, the age restricted overlay district, Jack?
Yes, yes, that's it.
Article twenty-one. Okay, to see if the town will vote to amend the Menden zoning bylaws adding five point oh-five Menden age restricted. Overlay district. We don't have any of the details, but, uh, Jack, uh, I'll leave that up to you to go ahead.
Sure, um, and thank you for taking me out of order after another planning board meeting. Let's see, I could think the best way to start is as you all know. Um, there's a project in front of the planning board on Hastings Street and, um, that's. Been going on for quite a while and the problem is, is that the zoning really doesn't fit the project. It's a mixed-use project. Uh, Menden does not have a mixed-use zoning bylaw and Menden does not allow more than single-family houses, period. So, and as you probably know, there's been a petition going around. I haven't seen it. But, um, so there's obviously controversy here. A controversy whether it was legally submitted, not legally submitted, but what legal path they would have to follow. Uh, controversy about impacts to the immediate neighborhood and maybe to the town as a whole. And, um. I took it upon myself after talking to one of the butters who did sign the petition and maybe started it, I'm not sure of that. Of trying to talk to some of the, the representatives of that petition. About what their concern is, and I should go back a little bit, and I said this when I first saw the project in front of the planning board. And I may have just started, I'm not sure. But the concept is not a bad concept. To have a small grocery store with a possible outbuilding in over fifty-five housing. All mixed with walking paths, et cetera, et cetera. Is good zoning in concept. But getting there is the problem and getting there that does not. Adversely impact the neighborhood as much as possible was the task, so to speak. So, and I know others have, have met with that group and maybe signed a petition again. I haven't seen it. So I've, I've been meeting with probably for two, maybe three months with some representatives of the neighborhood and others. About, you know, what would be reasonable for them? You know, we came up with a, a concept, a concept of, excuse me. Smaller impacts on, on to Washington Street, smaller impacts to the neighborhood. Smaller, um, possibly a smaller commercial project that's set back better, et cetera, et cetera. We went around and around and we also talked quite a bit about. You know, this is not the only place, if we come up with a good bylaw, this is not the only place we should place it. And believe it or not, we started. I just did a query on our GIS about give me ten acres that fronts Route sixteen. Providence Road or one forty, and believe it or not, there were, there were probably thirty parcels that came up. And we whittled those down to and, and decided that really, we're really talking about the, the more business oriented. Uh, roads and we kind of whittled it down to Route sixteen. So then we came, probably started with eight parcels. We've narrowed down that down to four. We went through the bylaw. We met with the developer of the project at Hastings. Started meeting with them on a weekly basis, maybe even a lot more than that. And we think we came up with a bylaw that reaches consensus for the most part. Um, we also, so, so my task has been. To draft something that I thought could meet, you know, the desires of, of at least the parties we spoke to. And I distributed a really rough draft to them. I started getting some very, very good comments from the butters, board members. Property owners. Lawyers that were either friends or represented property owners and the butters. And I started and actually I spent most of the day today. Taking their concerns and their, and addressing them as best as possible into a bylaw. And essentially that bylaws says you, uh, we identifies four properties. One is obviously thirty-five Hastings. The other one is, and I get the address mixed up here, but it's Bob Sweet's property. Bob Sweet was notified and is in favor of it so far. Um, there's another property at the intersection of Uxbridge and Hartford East. That fronts on both roads that we've identified, and then the last property for now is the town-owned property. If you share the screen, I can show it, Lonnie.
What do you want me to share, buddy?
My map.
Go ahead. You can share it. You have to click share. And then it'll, it'll tell you to pick what you want to share.
How about the agenda? Does that count? Hold on, we'll find it. You can see all the drafts I've had. Okay, so here are the four parcels. I can use the cursor.
Still not sharing, buddy.
It isn't.
No.
Okay. Let's see, so share this window.
There you go.
You got it?
Yeah, well, now we see your teams window, so slide. Whatever you got in, into that window with teams on it.
Does that do it?
No, if you gotta see it on the screen with teams unless you're just sharing just the teams window itself.
How do I bring it into the teams? I'm not an expert in that.
That's right. Click stop sharing.
Yep.
Up, up by the leave button there. Alright, now click share again.
Yep.
And when you click share, it's going to say, it's gonna ask you the, the screen or the, or just a, a specific window.
And I want a specific window, I assume.
Yep, so just find that actual, click on the specific window.
Yeah, how's that?
Uh, good, that's the one.
Alright, so you go to the left, it's number forty-five that has no bearing, it's just a numbering, well, actually it's a address. This property again fronts Uxbridge and a little bit on Hartford East here. That's one property we'd like to entertain for now and that can change. Then the next one is thirty-seven Hastings, I think thirty-five's involved in that and eighteen Washington. The next property is, um, the town-owned property and I included that corner only because that corner is probably not buildable without soil and water. Or a larger parcel to, to, um, to join with it. And then the sweet property here. Now, the, we've had a lot of discussion and I have with a lot of people about how to approach this. And the somewhat consensus is if we could do this in some kind, and I'm glad Charis is on the phone. Some kind of menu form, I'm hoping that the bylaw has the, the backing of town meeting. But if we could more or less menu these four and see which ones town meeting would like to include in this overlay district. Certainly we want, uh, the one at thirty-seven Hastings. We would like for now, the other three to be included and considered, but I'll leave that up to the selectmen and town meeting and whomever. So where I'm at now is I have a pretty good draft or reformatted draft that I, I'm gonna send out tomorrow. I'll send it to all the selectmen, planning board, every property owner, every person I've been dealing with. To get some more comments. Working with the neighbors, um, they would like to have a public meeting, not a hearing, public meeting. Sometime in April, but I don't have a date yet. They were working on that, probably a town hall, I assume, I'm not sure. But we'll publicize that and I'll make a more formal presentation. I wanna put this into PowerPoint probably. And something that we can get as many questions and comments as possible. Then the planning board is obligated to have a public hearing, which they are going to have on April twenty-fourth at six P M. That's a Monday. And then off to town meeting and I will get this to town council. Tomorrow as well to get her input. We've kind of talked a little about this, but not in detail at all. So, you know, I, I'm excited about it. I think a lot of people are. I think this is good positive zoning to, um, to get us to offer some over fifty-five housing, which is rare in Menden. Um, I should add, there's also for now a ten percent affordable clause in there, so we at least stay afloat. In our efforts to get affordable housing and to get some small commercial development that will go with it. So I think this is a positive way to go and I'm hoping the selectmen and town meeting see it that way.
Thank you, Jack. Um, I definitely, uh. Definitely like this and I'm, and thank you for taking that extra time to meet with everybody. To try to smooth over the concerns that were happening there.
You know, if I'm, can I add one other thing, Lonnie, and she's gonna kill me for this, but at the planning board Monday. I wanted to recognize Joyce Gilmore. She spearheaded this effort with me. And approached me about it in the beginning and hosted every single, I think every single meeting we had. So, um, and she's obviously a direct abutter, so kudos to her.
Yep, thank you. Thanks, Joyce, if you're listening. Now, does anybody on the board have any questions?
I just had a comment, so considering that I'm also a direct abutter, I'm just gonna be abstaining from any decisions about this.
Sure.
So, I mean, I, I honestly, I think we're just gonna decide, it doesn't belong in the warrant. It's a planning board article. I have no reason why we wouldn't.
Oh, absolutely.
The floor, right? Whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, that's, that's a different question, so, yeah. It's good information. Thank you, Jack.
Thanks, Jack.
I, I look forward to reading it.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, we're, we're gonna get it tomorrow, so that's good.
Tomorrow morning is my goal, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
May I?
The town council has a question.
Just a quick comment. From the, the preliminary research I've done, um, these age restricted overlay districts are permissible under state and federal law, but they have to be very carefully drafted. So I do want the opportunity to look at the language. There's some very specific requirements. So that it complies with federal law, um, so there are some things that are going to be non-negotiable. Which I will lay out, uh, once I see the draft and we'll share that back with everyone.
Yeah, and Charis, FYI, I did include a, a reference to federal statute in it. I hope it's the right one.
So, I, I, I know that you're saying you'll probably be ready for it tomorrow, but maybe, um. Do we want council to review it first and then we'll get a view at it, or do you guys all want to see it before that?
I just, I'm just curious to see it whenever it's, you know, eighty-twenty rule, if it's eighty percent there, just to get a sense for what it is.
Yeah, eighty percent's about right, yeah.
Alright, um, great, um, just make sure that, um, town council does get a copy right away so that we can, she can get to work on that. That would be great. Thanks, Jack.
Yeah, and, uh, the reason I'm coming in late with this is because we were down to the wire trying to make this happen, so. And that's another reason Carrots didn't get it right away.
Understood.
Yep. Yeah, I'll take a look at it. I just, again, want to make sure that it complies with the law.
Absolutely, that'd be great.
So, so I mean. As a board, then we support bringing this to the floor. Just want to make sure, so when it's on the floor. You, at some point, we do decide do we support it or not support it, right? Do we need to do that tonight or we can do that at a later meeting?
No, I think that, I think right, right now, um, I don't, when it comes to a zoning bylaw. As far as our input on support, I think it's a general bylaws is our input on support. I don't know. On zoning, it just goes through the regular process through planning, through their hearing, and then we would just speak on it at the town meeting as we would. As either a board or as an individual.
Lonnie, with all due respect, I would really like the Board of Selectmen to consider it and have the support. And I know the butters and everyone I've worked with would like to get the support of the Board of Selectmen. I mean, I think that's a big void. I don't need it tonight. I don't want it.
Right, Jack, I guess in general, if we were, if on the floor we were asked, where does the board stand on it, I'd want us to have a, a, an agreed-upon. Position, so we can do it later.
Absolutely.
And it, and it's not binding. They ask the board for what do we think or where, where do we land, even if it's not, it doesn't have to be unanimous, but if the board. Order one, whatever. Whatever, we can say the, and, and if, if you're not against it, but everybody else is. You get on board. That's sort of my thinking as a board, right?
Yeah.
May I also just suggest, um, Mr. Chair, that the board might want to actually see the motion. Uh, before it, uh, decides whether or not it's for or against the article.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Alright, is that all, Jack?
That's it for me. Thank you. I really appreciate you taking me early. And thank you, Charis.
Would you mind unsharing your screen for me?
Yep. You always want something, no?
Before we move on, I have corn for FinCom. I don't see who else is on.
Uh, hold on, I can get you the list of people. Peeps.
We're seeing three of us, so I don't think that's corn. Alright, well, I guess we don't have to open the FinCom meeting.
Alright, well, we'll just keep an eye on it. If they join, we can open it when you're ready.
Oh, I just want to do this.
Alright, um, so we'll just run through the warrant here. Uh, the first one is. Standard out of order, if you're going to adjust anything on the FinCom budget, that you have to be able to say. If you're gonna increase the line on them, you gotta say where you're taking it from. Or vice versa. Let's see if the town will fix, uh, Article Two salaries for elected officials. Bills of a prior year for Article Three. Anybody stop me that, if you have any questions.
That was printed out for the other day, the last week.
I don't think it's changed, yeah, other than maybe that, that one item might have been added if it wasn't up here. Uh, Article Five is chapter ninety money. For highways, roads. The cyclical inspection program is Article Six. Update the valuations account is seven. Uh, this will be to accept police department, federal and state matching grants. That's our number eight. Number nine. Well, that's the odd day opioid settlement program, the seventy-five hundred that we generally do.
Actually, um, I don't, I'm not familiar with that, Lonnie.
I believe. And I'm probably gonna hack this, there's an opioid program, uh, that, and, and when Kim jumps on, she probably has it in better detail.
If she jumps on.
Sure, it was, um. Dealt with the opioid problems, um, that we. Is that that we put in or do we take it to them? No, we're raising it appropriate and that's so. That's, um.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, there's a problem with this article. I've spoken to Kim about it, but, um, you're actually taking money out, not putting money in, so it needs to be redrafted and she and I have talked about that.
Okay, but is, I think she fixed it though, because it says to raise and appropriate, no?
Yeah. Yeah, you're not taking, you're not putting money in. I don't believe you're putting money in the settlement program. You're taking money out of the settlement program.
Okay, and we're, got it, to use here. To use here amended, I got it.
Correct, that's right.
Thank you.
Yep.
See, the town will transfer community preservation account to fund the, uh, this is the CPA money for the police station. Uh, Article ten, Article eleven. Five-year land use program, can grab the copies in the clerk's office, and I think it's on the website too. Oh, it is, yep. Uh, stabilization fund, employee accrual payments, is that with, um?
Gonna flag that one. I wasn't really familiar.
I, I think, is that the, um, employee, is that for the, uh, sorry. The health insurance piece that we pay the deductibles and whatnot?
It might be, but, but maybe when.
But out of stabilization seems, yeah, maybe I'm just wrong, but.
Can we, uh, circle back when Kim?
Yep, twelve. Enter into a lease agreement. Oh, this is, uh, sorry, a lease agreement for the ambulance. Four hundred twenty-five thousand. This is to enter in the lease agreement for the trackless and dump truck. We do have those, uh, placeholder here for the, to do the, uh, placeholder for the engineering design work for the senior center expansion project. So this is, we're looking for some more money for town hall. Oh, this is for the back, for the back half that we'll need to do the engineering on. Understood, understood. Water filtration system that we need to put in for the D E P. Eighteen, uh. Water Enterprise Fund. Circle back on that one. Is that just a normal enterprise fund that we need to transfer the money out of there or in there?
Is this, is this where they, um, is this how we balance the whole?
Water.
Action fees and pay up.
Very well, so be, sounds, sounds about right. These are our, our regular revolving funds, library six, transplanning board thirty thousand, highway twenty-five thousand, conservation twenty-five thousand, parks hundred and sixty-five thousand, fire department ten thousand. Water Health Title Five twenty-five thousand, Police Department fifteen thousand.
So, so with this one, just more for the budget discussion later, the parks number. There's a couple items asked out there, and I thought the revolving account paid for all the lifeguard salaries, things like that.
Yeah, this votes the limit on how much they can spend.
Right, so I, I see that number, but they're looking for a part-time beach manager.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So I just want to maybe bring it back to this account and say, why isn't it funded from here?
Yeah.
So, second.
Ancillary discussion.
You, well, can I just?
Yep.
Give you a, a heads up that if you are paying salaries out of a revolving fund. Hang on a sec, um, strike that up. I'll, I'll tell them about it.
And Charis, I may be, I may be misspeaking, so that, they might be, I'm not sure. I thought lifeguards might be.
Okay.
Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to expand the zoning board of appeals from three to five members. Just gonna assume that's three to five voting members, because it's already five members. It's just two, the two members are.
Do we need to?
Uh, I.
Clarify.
We can, we can clean it up if need be, but I, again, it is five members, two are non-voting, three are voting. I think we're looking to make it five member. And five member voting and we, would we also be looking to? Do five member voting. Majority vote, because now, right now, it's a three-person unanimous vote. I think that it would, it would still remain a three-person, majority would still be the same majority, but it would give. Uh, I think more flexibility to the Z B A if it was a majority vote, yeah.
Would that be instead of having?
Sorry, go ahead, Charis.
I would say it, it depends on the action that they're considering, because some of that is guided by state law.
Oh, okay, understood. I think, oh, I think right now our bylaw, and I, I would have to look it up, calls for. It has to be unanimous on everything.
A three-person, uh, board, zoning board, if it's issuing a special permit is required to be unanimous, um, on a. Under state law, so we just have to make sure the, it's consistent with state law. That's my only point. We'll, we'll, we'll see that. If you're gonna add that into the motion, we'll have to make sure it's consistent. That's my only point.
Okay, with a five-member board, is it still need to be unanimous?
No, it's four-fifths, depending on the, on a, on a special permit.
Okay, okay, so whatever, we'll mimic the state law, how's that?
Do you, do you know whether there would be alternates still, or would this be in place of the alternates?
I think this, I think the, well, I think the intent was to make it a five-member voting, so no more alternates. The, the two alternates would essentially become voting members.
Do you want to keep alternates? So in case you have an issue with anybody attending a meeting and then you have a mullin rule issue? So you really want five voting members and two non-voting members or two alternate members?
So make it seven members with two alternates?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I was assuming we'd keep alternates when I threw that out there.
Okay, so I think that we would need to make it seven members. Two alternates, five voting.
Yeah, that's.
Right, does that sound right? Okay, does that make sense, Charis?
It does.
Notes for the meeting. Thank you. Twenty-one, we already discussed. If you'd like to go over it again, Jack. Article twenty-two, conservation restriction on three point five-one access, so this is land, I was sorry, uh, Anna, you on?
Yes, I am, hi.
Hi, uh, would you mind doing the land use items?
Sure.
Article twenty-two.
So the one, this piece, this three point five-one acres on Morrison Drive. That will go with the Applewood Open Space. It's the access to Applewood Open Space, so when we put a conservation restriction, that would be included in it.
Okay, great. And this is for that piece that we just carved off of Morrison?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, twenty-three?
Um, that is just, let's, that's just to put money back in the account, the, uh. C P A account, um, because we're done with. That is just, let's, that's just to put money back in the account, the CPA account, because we're done with that project.
Okay, great. Twenty-four, same thing?
Same thing, yep.
Twenty-five, same thing?
So, sorry, it's a project we were gonna do, but at this time, we're not gonna do it, so we'd rather have the money back in the land bank.
Understood. Article Twenty-six. That's CPA?
Yep. I'm trying to read it, because I can't.
I'm sorry, this is for the CPA Affordable Housing Coordinator?
Yes, this would be. Pay, it's for the first year, it's a regional housing coordinator. Wait, is this a transfer, a transfer of some money? Money's been put into the Affordable Housing Coordinator account, but it hasn't been taken out, and it hasn't all been spent, so we wanna put that back in the CPA account.
Okay.
So just, I think this has changed a little bit since the numbering has changed.
Yeah, I just. Yeah, there were some corrections.
Right, so like twenty-eight and thirty-two on the hard copy or dupes, I think, so they adjusted the numbers on that.
To see if the town will set aside for later spending, community preservation revenues. This is just our typical ten percent open space, ten percent historical, ten percent affordable, sixty-five percent budget reserve, and five percent for administration.
Yep.
Okay, and I think of these numbers. Oh, no, okay, never mind. Twenty-eight. This is to, to use CPC money to install field lights at Pozella and Lowell Memorial, and in Memorial Park at Twenty-Nine Millville?
Yes, and they're going to be writing a grant and also getting money from the, among youth softball to pay for them.
That's awesome. That's great. See if the town will transfer community preservation account to fund part-time affordable housing coordinator position?
Right, so we're trying to have a regional housing coordinator with several towns, and Menden would just use, you know, a few hours, and the CMRPC got a grant for the first year, so it's nothing, but the second year would be sixteen thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, but the CPC committee wanted to pay for half of that position this year.
Lonnie, can you scroll to Article Twenty-six? So how, how is Twenty-six and Twenty-nine?
Twenty-six is, is right now, there's extra money left over in our current Affordable Housing Coordinator account, and we're gonna put that in, and then this is to fund it for the regional piece. Did I say that correctly, Anne?
Yeah, like, for example, we transferred twenty thousand dollars into the account at the last annual town meeting, but Bill McHenry hasn't been taking a salary, so that money's just sitting there.
How much money's sitting there? I mean, my point would be, how much, why do we have to transfer a half if we've got money sitting in the same account, Anne? Do we just?
Accounting-wise, I mean, we could just subtract that amount. I didn't know that if we needed to transfer the money back in and then, you know, transfer it out for a specific reason.
I would look for some, I mean, from a CPA standpoint, Anne, do you see a reason why that would need to happen?
No, no, I could combine it into one motion, and then if Kara says it's okay, we could do that.
And we, and we reduce our warrant by one article. I think that's good.
Okay, I'll try that. All right.
Get by off on accounting, too.
So. The accounts are all misnamed here, so I don't, we might wanna just check on that, because we're going from the transfer of some money from the CPA Affordable Housing Coordinator account to the CPA Affordable Housing account, then in over here, we're going to transfer some money from community preservation accounts to fund a part-time affordable housing coordinator position. Doesn't really even say where it's going.
I could have it go to the same account.
Maybe just make sure that we get it in the right.
Yeah, I don't wanna complicate things. Whatever's cleanest for people to see and understand on the floor would be the way to go.
Yeah, okay. And then thirty, Anne, is the one-seven-six, one-hundred-seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the records room. Matter of request of fifty percent.
So this is just. Renovations, the CPA funds will be one thousand one hundred seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, but you have to put out seventy-five percent of the money, and then that last twenty-five percent is reimbursed. So they're applying for a grant towards this project.
Great, excellent. And that's for the records room, which is over here downtown, that small house, small building. I'm just gonna jump thirty-one and continue with CPA stuff. Thirty, well, it's thirty-two on here, sorry if the numbers are wrong. This one would be the community preservation accounts to subsidize affordable housing projects at fifty-two Providence Street. Okay, this would be zero to six hundred thousand for the affordable housing project that's slated to go behind the senior center.
Correct, yeah. And so we don't know, we, the RFP is out, and we're waiting for proposals to come in, and so it sort of depends if anybody submits something, or if they need extra money to subsidize their project, so that's just there in case we need to subsidize it.
Okay, great. I understand, thanks. This looks like a placeholder to purchase a piece of land.
Yeah, and I think we'll have the details on there soon. I just, Kara, Kara needs to look at it and first. And this article also goes with the other article, which we'll all clarify soon, hopefully.
Okay. This is to transfer twelve hundred from our gutters account?
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's just the gutters on the records room, and the project is finished, and that money was left over, so we wanna put it back in the CPA accounts.
Got it. The next ones, I believe, are historical parks and select board. Let me run back up to the historical one up here. Your town will transfer the care management control of the records room and land associated. This article is looking to move the care and management of the records room to the select board. For us to develop a plan for preservation. Adaptive municipal and community use conveying a perpetual historical preservation restriction therein, and to authorize the select board to convey a perpetual historic preservation restriction encumbering said Seth Hastings Law Office, records room land and building to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts through the Massachusetts Historical Commission, on which terms and conditions for such consideration. Okay, so that's essentially for us to put a restriction on there. Get that done. Sorry, is there anybody from historical on?
If I remember correctly, that restriction is required with the grant.
Gotcha, okay, all right. What's LHD? Why do I not know what that? Do you guys know what that?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-seven, well, yeah, it says LHD. Well, we can do thirty-six.
Historic district.
Oh, gotcha. So, sorry, I skipped the one about to see the town, and then we'll transfer the care custody management control approximately a certain amount of acres to town-owned property located at some address on Milford Street, shown as. This is a placeholder for Joey, it says, okay?
Depending the details.
Yeah.
That's just giving us authority to do something with that parcel, right?
Apparently. Okay, the local historic district, they wanna change the bylaw. Men, Chapter Thirty.
They're pulling color off, because that's mistakenly identified. There's something we have jurisdiction on.
Okay. I shall be. Okay, so that's just the change that they're making, and they're going to insert.
I think the maps are updated, but they didn't add the language into the sentence.
Okay. Okay, thirty-eight is to construct the maintenance garage at at the memorial field behind the bathroom area or up in that section.
This is one I actually had questions on.
Yeah, go ahead.
Funding source, but also, I understand the, the need for this, and I support it, but given our focus on sort of multi-year planning and cap, capital plan, doesn't make sense to move forward, because three fifty caught my eye. It seems significant, not insignificant, and I'm wondering, do we move on this, or do we roll this into our planning that we wanna kick off in the next couple months to kind of roll it into, because we have a lot of capital requests that are coming our way?
Sure. The, I mean, they're not here to speak to it, but the, the request has been there for quite some time. Yeah, I suppose we can kick, I mean, we can kick the can again. The, the parks department equipment is kind of spread out. It's in the building up on Morrison. I think some of it's at the highway department, or it used to be, maybe they got thrown out of the highway department. And they just don't have, even, even using the building that's on Morrison Drive, there's no electricity. There's like a generator. They utilize the.
Yeah, no, I'm with you on the issue. I'm just more thinking the timing right now.
Well, what's the proposed source?
I don't know that either.
Right, so that's.
I think that you might finance it or something. I mean, I, I mean, I'm possible, sorry. Oh, Kim's here. You got your hand raised? Go ahead, Kim.
So I think we've all discussed this building many times, but considering what Mike just said, it's, it's, the timing is like, is very interesting, because for me, if we are considering potentially the shift to a public works department, which could actually incorporate some of what we're talking about related to parks, we need to be thinking bigger about what future office space looks like potentially for positions that could be created within that department, and where they would be housed, as well as equipment. And so I did get an email from Dan today. They are interested in like doing an RFP and getting some quotes, and I think they should continue to do that, because we need pricing related to what we're talking about. But we, I mean, it's just tricky right now, because we don't know what the true needs really are, right? They could shift dramatically in six months, but I don't wanna stop them from continuing, but I don't think we're ready to fund a building, right? Because we don't know what we're building for.
So is this article necessary for that RFP? Is that the idea?
No, but I also, I, I, I think to Lonnie's point, in, sometimes it is about getting, getting the message out, right, that we have capital needs that we probably aren't getting addressed, and this is definitely one of them, but I don't know that using the warrant as the sort of a newsletter in order to get that message out is the right method either, right? So I, I just, you know, I think they absolutely should continue on their path. I just don't know.
If it gets voted on positively, we have to figure out a source of three hundred and fifty K that we don't have.
Well, we.
We could also.
The source would be potentially stabilization. It, I mean, that's ultimately, I mean, so we could leave, so the parks wanted to leave it on, and they had a design for a building, and they had quotes, and we left this on. It would go to the FinCom for a recommendation on the funding source. FinCom can positively or negatively recommend the article or not, and it could still go to town meeting and still be voted on at town meeting to be funded.
I'm sorry, too, Mike, if that's what you were getting at, I was misunderstanding what you were getting at. I wasn't even thinking about the public works part of it. I was, I thought you were.
I just think we've got a lot of things we've been talking about or listening to, and I think there's a, a I wanna, Dan would kill me, but I wanna put, you know, pause this a little bit, because I think there's a, you're probably gonna get efficiencies at scale if you start thinking about this more broadly. And, and the funding source is, is accurate. So if we're gonna go to three fifty, you know, three fifty is what? We got one point, one and a half in stabilization, something like that? That's a significant chunk out of our stabilization for this building. I just feel like I think we should pause on it, honestly. I don't know if we can take it off the warrant, but then we should come back to see if, as a board, we support it in the same way FinCom does, and if I need to speak to my feelings on the floor, I'll do that.
I don't think they, we need to pull it until before it goes to print, right, Kim? We got time on that?
Well.
I think warrants technically.
I would recommend this as an alternative plan of action, right? Take it off the warrant. We're not ready to fund. We don't know what we're funding, right? But obviously, parks and Dan are gonna be a big part of what we're doing anyway around this study. We can just be looking at them together at the same time. Let's not leave parks out on an island by themselves doing this on their own. Let's bring them in, right? And talk about how potentially, you know, even if it is Morrison Drive, or even if it is another location, like, let's have that conversation and then bring it together to the floor, maybe in November with an idea, even if it's for money, funding for, you know, design or options or whatever, right? We'll have more data by the fall, and we'll also have more money by the fall, which is another big piece, right? I hate to see them go without a location again for their equipment, but it's, it's hard, you know, it's, again, to Mike's point, we don't have that much money in stabilization, and unfortunately, we have purchased things that potentially were not as great a need as maybe even this building was in the last couple of years, that now we're gonna tie up much of our money in CapEx and stabilization for the next eight years, and so you know, maybe there's another option related to, I don't, leasing a thing, I don't know, but I think we need more time to sort that out.
Yeah, to me, it's a question of if, not if, but when.
Yeah.
You know, I think it will happen. I think, you know, and I think we'll, we, it's up to us to kind of make sure it stays in the forefront as an opportunity.
Yeah, it shouldn't drop. I mean, if we're gonna have a bigger public works discussion.
Yeah.
There's an opportunity to have something that could be bigger and better than what they're doing here, right? If it's incorporated into a larger plan, and I'd rather do it right once.
Kim, is that already specifically called out in the, the study definition and scope, to make sure that, you know, Parks Department facilities and storage are included?
No, so our study is only based on needs based upon services that we provide, right? And whether or not those services would be better and more efficiently served by combining and creating one larger department of public works, right? So they're going to look at any potential areas that could be in a public works department, water, tree watering, parks, right? And, and highway, right? They're gonna look at all of it, but they're not gonna say, you know, what your needs are, right? Facilities-wise, they're gonna say you need, your structure should be a public works director with a, you know, a maintenance assistant, maintenance supervisor with a road supervisor, right? That's what they're gonna do. So, but I mean, that is set to be done, and then, well, you know, it's gonna happen in the next couple of months, right? So.
I, I also think, too, when you think about capital needs, we're not talking about next year. We're not, it's not gonna be analysis paralysis. This is like a sixty, ninety-day window to put a framework together, Kim, and we understand what the possibilities are. So I mean, I think we should be moving forward on that.
Yeah, right, and so that's what I'm saying. I just got an email today about an RFP or getting information. I think that's absolutely right. I don't think that I think we need to know even what they think they, their needs are and what that cost would be on their own, right? And that's really critical as we're also figuring out how that fits into our larger picture with what our future looks like for public works. So I think the timing is good, but I don't think the funding right now makes much sense.
I personally rather see an RFP before there's a number associated with it, and I guess, second, on this whole public works thing, is there an opportunity for new sources of funding because it's a public works department or something? I'm just trying to figure out how the financial numbers benefit us. I know that there's efficiencies in operating and, you know, all of that good stuff, but I'm just, from a numbers perspective, what is the benefit that would change whether we have extra money available?
The, the service level won't change. The town's service levels will not change. So the, the current services that the town provide would not change, and they, those do not generate funds. So this is more, this is more of bringing in expertise, professional level expertise in different areas in order to provide better, you know, manage. you know, management of existing functions that the town currently provides, right? So um you know, if there's a person or there's an area to sort of bring in water and somebody is a has expert like in there, then maybe down the line, something comes from that, then maybe, but like not initially, it's not um it's not it's not designed for revenue generation.
Yeah, well, my question is more, there are individual departments that all have a cost of operation. Combining them all is the is the sum, sum of all of them going to equal the same amount of costs of the town to operate?
I mean, i- is it fair to say if we were to come?
I would say that's doubtful.
Yeah, but so, Kim, but if we come back, come forward with a public works recommendation about a reorganization, I think what I'm hearing is, is it, should we should we include some sort of ROI, even if it's flat?
Yeah.
Right? That's what you're asking, like, what's the benefit, right?
I mean, it's it's very right. It's very obvious in many areas in the town in which potentially wages and salaries related to those positions are not currently meeting standards that the town will have to address those at a future town meeting and then justify those expenses. Because when you restructure or reorganize departments like this and you try to bring in increased professionalism, you know, and that's, you want the best for your town, that's what you have to do, right? Every, we have to make a case for everything we try to do, right? So unfortunately, you know, we aren't in the business really of making money. We are in the business of providing services and so it's tricky, right? And the town has competing needs, but I hopefully, you know, thinking of the next twenty to twenty-five years of what the town looks like, I mean, certainly I think we've had this discussion, which is why we switched from highway surveyor to appointed, you know, potentially director anyway, which is the the world has changed substantially in the last thirty years. The job has changed substantially.
Really to say, and maybe answer the question you're asking, but I think any recommendation would either need to define an investment of some sort to to bring it to fruition as well as a level of service that is going to be the same or better. Or some operational efficiencies, which is some, which offsets possibly increase costs and salaries. I mean, that all has to be part of the study, but I don't think we can answer that now.
Yeah, no, I'm going to look for an answer now. Around the whole idea of public works department, the value position, I want to see what the value probably is. The other piece of it is if it's going to end up costing the town more money, it's not that we shouldn't do it, just as long as the value is there and you're getting the value for the dollar. Uh, in regards to the money required for the shed, is it six to one, half a dozen the other? Because if we go to a public works department, uh, the problem of pulling money from stabilization in order to fund this that's going to exist now in the fall next year, year after, right? I don't know if there's a, if there's grants that can be achieved, state funding that because you have a public works department that's available. I have no idea. I'm just grasping at straws. Is there another better reason to have a public works department so that we can fund something like this without pulling out a stabilization?
Fair enough.
Yeah, I think that that's probably what the study will show a bit, but at the same time, you know, we talk about trying to be more efficient. We're already spread very thin with departments as it is now. We're not, there's by consolidating parks and DPW and and water, we're not there's, there's one person that actually works for all three of those right now, I think, right? So it's Dan. I mean, he does parks, he does water, he does. So there's a, the the consolidation there. I I don't, I don't see where there, there was going to, there'll be a a money, you know, and in, sorry, a return from on monies there as more as, like you said, it might end up costing us much, a little bit more. And then talking about the the building wrapped into that, I think what I'm hearing is that the building there might be a, uh, we might be needing to, even if we have to add on to the to the um, the highway to building, if that's what we're talking about, something there that now we can say, well, take that three fifty and we'll add it into that to make room for the parks. So again, don't you guys get all excited over there? I'm not saying we're expanding the building, but this study could show anything like that, so. Good, good. So the next article is the five thousand to purchase the water testing equipment.
The the shit, are we taking the building off? Did we make a decision to leave it on or take it off?
Oh, I think we're taking it off. Right, Kim? Where'd you go?
That's you.
We'll take it off for now.
That's your call.
Right, so are we going to remove the park shed? Move the the article?
I'm all right with it. Yeah, I mean, I think
I mean, I don't want to, but I do.
Well, I I think it does make sense to wait until after the study.
Yeah, and then, and we can put it on the, on the, on the, sorry, the fall special, which is probably, and it, we're not that far away from it at that point. I like it.
The next appropriate town meeting where it makes sense to put it on because Dan will come in, say, putting on November, right?
Yeah, right, right. So now the new thirty-eight is to take uh five thousand to purchase water testing equipment. This is for the, um, so we've been the kind of segue to the lake association thing. Um, there've been, there's multiple groups testing water around the lake. For health, we have, um the lake association was doing some, uh, so we're trying to consolidate that down now, and by buying this product that the parks is looking for, we can do our testing faster and in-house, uh, to do the collection, which in essentially, it will pay for itself over time because the cost of the the folks coming to pick up the water is where the cost is.
Does this tie into the task force that you'd?
Essentially, yes and yes and no, right? I I again, the 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 testing will still be done with the board of health. The board of health, I think, was looking for a little bit more money in their budget to do additional testing. This will help them for that testing by having the collection done in-house essentially, and some of the testing will be able to do in-house as well.
I think it's a great idea, and would this allow more testing sites and to survey the lake at a greater level of detail?
Absolutely, and that's what the whole piece was for, uh, with the extra money from the board of health as well. This is the kit to actually do it.
Perfect.
Ah, article forty, gross. Uh, four thousand to purchase outdoor enclosures for automatic external defibrillators um, and the related hardware. So I think that this is
Is it tied back to Bill's inventory? Is this the one with that we're missing and we still need to replace one in town hall?
I don't think this is, though, this is for parks. This is to put AEDs at, to fund the purchase of outdoor enclosures for the defibrillators. I'm assuming we already have them, but this would be
They'll, yeah, they're locked and they're limited access.
Right, so this will get them out in the fields that anybody can grab them. See kids messing with these and chasing each other around the field with them. We hope not, right? Thinking back to my childhood. Oh, forty-one is a rock the block placeholder. Uh, if there's think that we just needed to, we didn't put any money budget-wise. I'm assuming, Kim, that's why that's on there to
Yeah, so I put it on here because um year, a year ago or so, when we talked about this, we talked about putting an annual funding source of some, we used to have a community celebrations line never really had a lot of money in it, right, in the operating budget? But sometimes with articles like this, we do special articles annually to allow us to a lot of certain amount of money. So, you know, five thousand, ten thousand, I was thinking of it in that way, which is like you know, a little bit every year, because I know it also generates a lot of revenue, so it's helpful, but I also need, I know I need startup funds every year to get going, right? And so that's the tricky part. So I just put it back on here because during the budget process, if we're adding a special article for it in the budget, right, can be part of the reason appropriate that goes with the budget, but we have to add it as an article.
Okay, thank you.
Or we could put it in the department, which is another option, which, but it's not there now.
Okay. What's, was the article twelve? Is that the one you want me to go back to, Mike?
Uh, yes.
Kim, twelve, uh employee accrual payments, just was wondering what that was for? Is that for the um for uh, the insurance, uh what do you call it?
So um, we, we probably don't need this article. Um, I wasn't here earlier, sorry, but um, we probably don't need this, you know, um, now that we, we are anticipating, you know, some larger probably the last of our larger retirements in the next year or so, and when those occur, they do have costs associated with them, and in most years, um we usually have enough money in employee benefits, right? There's always a little bit budgeted in there for this. But if we happen to get hit with multiple in any year, we might be in a tough spot. Um, but I was able to, now that we have official notification and the ones that I'm aware of and the timing, I already sort of looked at it, so I don't think we need this. But I do think you should keep it on your radar, right? For the future.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Uh, one of the, just, and I know Karis brought it up, um, and you weren't here, just the opioid line is backwards. We need to take the money out and not put it in. But she said, I think you already know that. All right.
I also had a question about the salaries on the parks department for article nineteen.
Yeah, um, oh, Kim, revolving account for parks. I thought, and I may be mistaken, I thought, um, like the lifeguard salaries, things like that were covered in the revolving account, like, so it was sort of a net, it was a wash because they're collecting fees and they're paying uh, some of their part-time summer associates out of it. Did I have that wrong?
No, that's right. Um, that's right. And so the the only thing that's changed in this account in the last five years is that the limit was raised because the entirety of the operation and it goes over basically two fiscal years because it's the summertime. So they get, they're allowed to only hold so much in the account or spend so much in the account, like there's a limit, like, but it had to be raised to basically cover the whole thing, sort of like trash. So that's, that's what this is. It's for the summer programming.
Right, and so it was sort of a, I brought it up more as part of a budget discussion that we're going to have when I saw it. So, you know, just that part-time manager piece to the beach, things like that. I didn't know if this was a funding source for that, but we can talk about that when we get into budget.
Yes, we can. Anything else on any of these other ones? So, did you mention on seventeen, I'm not sure if you're aware, I should just put that as a shout out. I did um, ask, you know, some of our representatives, I put in for an earmark for a water filtration system. No guarantee on if we would get it or not, um, but I figured that was a, it's worthy a cause of any related to what we're doing over here, right? Um, so we could leave this on for now and cross our fingers is my thought. Um, or deal with it in the fall. I don't know how soon we'll have to take action on that.
What number was that? Oh, that was the one for the
Yes, I mean, just as a reminder, as you're going through this, because I did not put together, I haven't put together a spreadsheet at all yet related to the numbers in these articles, right, the actual spending. We do not have any free cash available for these articles. The only funding sources that we have for any of these are either raise and appropriate, right, which is tax, right? Or stabilization or CapEx, right? Or unless there's another fund that they're, they are designating as the source. So um, just as a reminder, CapEx and stabilizations are two third votes, you know, um and they are our savings accounts. So I know we have a lot of needs. Um, and we are, we will, we should have more free cash in the fall, so if there are requests on here that people could wait till the fall for that certainly would be probably easier to fund and make a decision on at that time. I mean, we haven't really had that conversation with the boards who submitted their articles or the things that, like, just saying, that hasn't, we haven't really said that out loud, so just putting it out there now in case there are some people who could sort of maybe kick the can till the fall, that's all.
So, Kim, as an example, if I'm looking at what I see as article fourteen, which is just the multipurpose tracklist and dump truck?
Just about that, same question.
That's my favorite one. Want to talk, want to talk about that?
But what you're, no, I guess what you're saying is when I see the language, I'm like, okay, I understand what they're saying, but really CapEx or stabilization is saying only two sources for that truck.
All right, so let's be crystal clear because I didn't see that it's also, is is there an article on here? Because it's been moved around since I looked at it last, the whole thing, um, to approve a lease related to the tracklist?
That's it.
Okay, good. So this article, if
Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Hold on. Article fourteen says raise and appropriate or transfer for the purchase or lease of a multipurpose tracklist and dump. I don't recall seeing one specifically to enter into the lease.
Karis is saying yes.
I don't know what yes means. You muted, Karis, you're muted.
We, we need lease approval.
Sorry, this is for purchase or lease, Kim, so I think you're covered.
Oh, so it's all the same one. There's just one article.
Okay, fine. So then, is there another article on here? All right, so we need to do multiple actions related to the tracklist, okay, and the dump truck together. We need to approve the lease, right? And we need to transfer the money to make the payments on the lease. So if they can be done in one article, that's awesome, right? I just don't want to get there and not have the one that we need. So I think we talked about this before. When the tracklist was pitched two budget cycles ago, we didn't have any money in CapEx. We only have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I think the entirety of it was supposed to be five hundred thousand dollars. At the time, you know, there, we had also just entered into a lease agreement related to the fire engine, I believe, and so we've done other municipal leases. And so the idea was pitched that we should do a lease because it makes more sense, because then we have more time to make the payments, which we did. But typically, municipal leases need to be three years and not eight years that it turned out to be. And so anything over three years needs to go to town meeting for approval, and so that's what we're going to do. The tracklist itself, in the documentation related to it, we had said that we would make the payments annually from CapEx as the funding source. And so we need to do that. Now, you don't necessarily have to take it from CapEx, but you're going to need to take it from somewhere. It's either going to be CapEx or stabilization or it needs to be allocated for in your operating budget, right? Um, this year, I think some of you were already involved in it, emails back and forth. For whatever reason, um, the payment was charged to the operating budget. So of the highway department, which created an issue for the last town meeting. So in any which way, you need to make seven more payments on this lease. So you will have to decide a funding source for it moving forward. It could be different every year, depending on your financial circumstances, but you do need to take a vote in some way to do it, either by including it in the budget or putting it out as an article to move money from somewhere, okay?
And does the article need to be on this uh, annual town meeting warrant?
Yes, absolutely. Well, the lease approval has to be on this town meeting warrant.
I'm talking about, but see, see, I I'm sorry, but I just brought up fourteen because I wanted to go through just those articles where we had to find money. And it sounds like for this one, due to whatever reason, we may not actually need to find money, we have to approve the lease. But do we have to trans?
No, you need money for next fiscal year. Yes, absolutely. You don't need it for twenty-three, you need it for twenty-four.
Right.
This, remember, this is going to be for twenty-four's budget.
And could that be done in the the fall STM? That's a question.
With the, I mean, you have to guarantee a funding source related to a lease typically. I mean, your accounting normally wouldn't sign off on it. I mean, this sort of slipped right through, um.
All right, so you're saying we need this article, we need to find a funding source for this lease?
Yeah, we need to correct this action as soon as possible. I don't think it's safe, even from a standpoint that we, we need to vote on the authority to do it, and we need to vote on the actual funding for it, considering we've already taken receipt of the equipment.
Right, so, okay, so that that stays and that probably is, um, so I'm just, I was just trying to understand when you made the comment, we have, you know, we have no money except for CapEx and stabilization. I wanted to just go back, figure out
Well, right, but in this instance, you're, you've already obligated yourselves to pay for this, and that's the thing. You will not
Yeah, we we got to leave this one. It's the other ones now. I I didn't want to remove more, so
Well, we have to leave it. Devil's advocate, what if it gets voted down?
Well, we're, we're in a different spot then, right?
Yeah.
And we have to figure out the funding source, right? Um, well, if the, so if it doesn't get approved, we talked about this, there are, are alternatives related to leasing the object, but one other option is also to just pay for this thing outright and be done with it, right? I mean, nobody wants to do that because we don't have any money, but like there this is why capital plans should exist.
Okay.
Equipment, plans.
We we agree this should stay on, we can figure out funding source, and then if there's the eventual outcome is negative on the floor, we get, we 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 need a plan B.
Yeah.
C, D, E, F, right?
Yeah.
I was just trying to, I just, I picked the wrong ones. I just want to figure out which ones we have to find money for.
So that one, that one is a must-do. Um, the senior center, I don't know how we fund that right now. Um, town hall, this one is sort of a catch-all. Um, right now, it's turned out to be something the police might need uh, for their camera system. It might be the windows. It might be if if a project happens to run over. But right now, um, this, I've been non-committal about this one because my hope has been that we're going to be under budget on everything and we'll have funding available. I'd rather leave it on here and get and we'll have funding available. I'd rather leave it on here and get to May and then know what we actually need to ask for, right? If we need anything, uh, but.
One, one second, the town hall articles, I have sixteen on my draft, but that's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, sixteen, yeah.
So we, we initially thought that was to get set up funding for the back half, but that's not what you're saying. You're saying it's for the, what's underway now and any other town hall improvements we might need.
Yeah, this is the, this is the one, um, specifically related to the windows to, um, potentially the alcove, when we get the numbers back for what the next phase is for the alcove. And for, um, the additional key fob camera system that the police station needs related to the parking lot that was part of the project that I'm hoping maybe we can actually just find the money within this year and transfer to do it. But those are the things that are still outstanding on the campus, like the leftover pieces. Which is why I've been waiting to see, um, what we have left. I didn't, I don't want to go back to town meeting and ask for more money related to the town hall or the campus at all, if we don't need it. And so, but I won't know basically right down until almost the last month of the year. So of the fiscal year.
But you'd be, do you need to, um, can you fund from different places to cover one article? Because if you think about windows, Kim, then we could subpart of that cost that you don't know about yet. If you want to isolate the windows, because that can come from CPA.
Yeah, well, but we'll, we'll know better. Um, I mean, and Charis can jump in and say if she would prefer that we specify exactly what projects related to the town hall in the language of the article. But I mean, it, it could, that's the thing, it, it I might not need any for the rest of it, right? Dave might not need any for his cameras and we might need the windows. So we don't know, right? And so, but if any one of them does, we need to have an article on here and then find a funding source. And maybe it turns out to be CPA and it's just for the windows, right?
Yeah, uh, you'll have to specify by the time you get to the motion. And you can do multiple projects with multiple sources in one motion. You just have to specify. So you can, you can fill that out before town meeting date. When you're pulling your motions together and when you go to, to FinCom.
Hey, Kim, on, on twenty, the ZBA, we actually discussed, um, I don't know if you were on yet. I just want to make sure you knew, we, we discussed going to seven members, keeping two alternates with five members voting.
Okay, cool. Anything else? I mean, so the next step from this is basically, so Laura's not here and I wasn't here for the beginning. So hopefully somebody took diligent notes about what's getting pulled and not pulled, or I'll have to go back and re-watch, um.
So we just, I think we just talked, we just talked about them, just while you were here. We weren't pulling anything until you were on.
Right. We only pulled the shed.
Not pulling any tricks. Um, so I, I'll, if there's thing, if there's such that you know that's getting pulled, just send me the numbers, right? Go over it, whatever, we'll do that. Then we send this version with all this red line and all this stuff that's in there. We send it to council to start cleaning up related to language, right? And making sure it's right. So then the next time we come back in two weeks with the warrant, it's basically done, right? Because we're going to print, you know, a week or so after that, right? So there shouldn't be any substantial changes really after we get this next version back, unless they're minor wording changes, right? So that's the point we're at.
Okay. Uh, FY twenty-four budget reviewed. You want me to pull it up, Kim?
You want me to do it, since you're busy and I'm sitting here in front of the computer?
It does, either way, it doesn't matter. Let me just stop.
Oh, wait, pressing the wrong one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. If anybody wants to come up, by all means.
Can we see if we have form for FinCom?
Oh yeah, hang on one sec. We're gonna see if we have a FinCom.
I'm sorry.
I see you.
Raise your hands if you want to be on FinCom.
Yeah, anybody want to be appointed to the FinCom for the night?
So only three of us, alright.
Wouldn't be the first time. Wouldn't be the first time this year.
Right.
You let me know when you're ready.
Yeah, sure. Go ahead.
Okay, so the, the very last meeting, um, I told you that, um, we had about two hundred and forty thousand dollars of a deficit, right? That's what I was anticipating based on some information that I knew. Since that time, all of the information has come to light. And then I also told you that I would come back to you with a balanced budget for tonight, and I have. So, um, we can talk about how we got there. Um, so for ease of simplicity, I'm gonna move this little box, um, just to sort of, we'll start sort of on a regular budget, so you can see what it looks like. If anyone wants to take a look at exactly what made it in and made it out. And then we'll talk about them in more detail, right? So we had a couple of issues still outstanding when we left last time. So you can see I added this column here in the green with the recommended. This is twenty twenty-five, obviously it should be twenty twenty-four. Um, so this, everything is the same here. You can see there is a reduction here. This, the, this column variance column is reductions when you see them, okay, of where I've gone in our budget to make reductions. And then we'll talk about them on the next page. And so there, everything, this is all the same, there's no changes here. Then we get a little bit further down. So the total reduction in general government at this point is about twenty-eight thousand. Um, then we get to fire, and this is one of the substantial changes from last time that I wasn't quite ready to, to get into. And we'll talk about that a little bit more, but there's, um, savings here, um, due to attrition. And that's gonna be about seventy-nine thousand dollars. So that's really gonna help us in our current financial situation. But we'll talk about, when we get to the next page, the implications of that, because there were losses in revenues because of this change as well. And so we had to adjust that side of the budget as well. Um, a little bit further down, this is all the same. I didn't put the changes in here for Merzda, but I'll jump right to their page. So you can see it summarized. So, um, they were kind enough, uh, Monday night to hear our pleas and come back with a reduced ask, um, of an additional reduction of about eighty-five thousand from the last time that they were here. And so, um, I've incorporated their new numbers into the budget. And then in that same Merzda page, if you want to track the changes over time, I've got each three, eight, three fifteen, three twenty, if anybody for the future, you know, you want to go back and take a look at how that evolves. And then, um, and here in highway, nothing's changed. So here's one, so you can see, there's two areas I've had to highlight in this tan, I guess is the right color. So one of the budgets that we hadn't gotten to yet that I was stalling on, because it was such a pain, is this streetlights budget. Okay, so, um, to do this elaborate analysis of streetlights that, you know, I'll only get into for a millisecond because it's outrageously complicated and people might have questions about why. I had to go back and basically pull two years' worth of data and then try to do some trend analysis and then go back and figure out when their actual rate increases were in order to predict averages potentially going forward related to these accounts that are all grouped together and not separate at all. Okay. All to say that we have two accounts in the town that we pay electricity bills out of. And not all of our buildings are in these, just two. And one of them is very specifically for streetlights. And the rest is for, we've usually is paid for out of the town hall budget. It's town hall, but it's really encompasses the campus and many other things, right? So I had estimated, um, something very high and I was right, but it happens to be high in two different places and not just in one. So I had to go back and adjust for where the actual costs would be based upon that data. So this was a higher, it was like sixty-three thousand. I had, this one's actually gonna be closer to forty-three, which sounds great, right? Um, and up in the town hall, which will be the new facilities budget, um, I had to go from forty to fifty-two to make sure these things were budgeted correctly in the right places. So, uh, that's one change from last time. And I'll, I'll show you the, more of that on the next page when we get to the drivers too. So that was one change, um.
Hold on, Kim.
Just a quick question on the lighting. So you increased the cost in two line items for lighting, if I understand that correctly, right? And so the, the analysis allowed you to allocate the lighting cost to the right accounts. Did we, did we, but we saw an overall increase, significant increase in lighting costs?
Yeah, it's still here. Well, so when we get to the next page, so basically I did a little was and now. So you can see where, what I had budgeted and what, what it was and what it is now. We're still saving some money based off of what I'd budgeted before, sort of as a placeholder. It was saving sixteen thousand dollars, basically from what I had budgeted after my analysis. So there is some savings, but it's not directly just in that line, right?
Okay, thank you.
This is the analysis of the cost, uh, I guess, just thinking about what electricity rates right now are. I know they skyrocketed to whatever thirty-three cents a kilowatt hour. Uh, it seems that in April, it's about to drop back down to just under fifteen cents a hash one hour.
Exactly.
Right? I don't know if that changes anything about the analysis in some way, or if that has nothing to do with our rates here, but just throwing it.
It de, it definitely, so our rates are very complicated. Um, they does, of course, it affects us, we still pay the regular rates, but we also receive credits based upon um, agreements that we have related to solar projects that we have that then get applied to budgets that then, so like it, just as an example, you take just a peek at the very top of this sheet, right? Like carryovers and then like, nothing is paid as simple as a bill. It doesn't come in one month and then a credit is applied in that month. And it, it takes multiple months for these credits to get applied. And then they're all, this, only, like, it's only partial, because new things are accrued. It's like, it's complicated. I mean, you know.
Positive, I just heard, right? We get credits and our rates are gonna.
Yeah, right. So it would be, it would be a lot more if we didn't get those credits, right? But, um, yes, I have anticipated, um, a rate increase, an additional rate increase in these numbers. Um, but I won't promise you that it's gonna be a hundred percent enough, but revisit it again once you have more data, right, in the fall.
My, my point is, if analysis right now assumes the thirty-three cent a kilowatt hour rates and for the next fiscal year, it's not going to be that, right? April for the six months after is gonna be fifteen cent a kilowatt hour. And hopefully they don't jack it back up in the winter again to thirty-five cents kilowatt hour or something like that, right? Um, I'm just trying to understand what assumptions in the rates are in the analysis to either hopefully identify additional funds
Right.
that could be reduced because of the reduction.
Yeah, did we take thirty-three cents a kilo and, and project that through for the next twelve months?
Right.
So that might be enough. It, to me, this is back to like intra-year management of the budget. Like if you do this quarterly reviews, this should be a line item we watch.
Yeah.
Right? And you might see some accrual of potential downstream benefit.
Yeah, and maybe that, that rate decrease isn't going to affect much because of all the other stuff that's on, which is fine, that's great. But it would be great to look at the actuals using the thirty-two cent kilowatt hour and then project what it might be once it actually goes down and that all gets finalized. And for the fall budget, maybe there's additional funds. I mean, we're grasping at straws all over the place here, right? So an extra ten grand, five grand there, I mean, it, it all helps, right? Okay, move on. We have to believe in point.
Okay. And then lastly, um, you can see I've reduced, um, the the eleven hours for the library budget based upon their email saying that they would allocate. Uh, no, I took out the nine hours for the library assistance, since they said they wouldn't pursue that at this time. And I've left in the funding for the assistant librarian becoming full-time. Uh, it doesn't show as more reduction here, obviously, because that fifteen thousand dollars is actually a credit to the revenues, right? And so I'll show you that on the sec, the next page. Um, I did not reduce their books budget. I don't think anyone is listening from the library, but if they were, um, just so that one of their targets is always at least nineteen percent of their budget. It needs to be for books and new materials. It's at twenty point seven with this adjustment, so they should be set. Um, so that way all of their fifteen is staying allocated, right, to their budget.
They don't need to use that one time, or?
They, no, they voted to use it.
They voted to use that money.
Okay.
They took out the, what she was saying, though, they took out the other portion of the, uh, part-time folks at the counter, the nine hours, right, Kim? Eight or nine hours. Yes, they, they, they're not gonna pursue that at this time. They took, they used the money out of their state aid money.
And then, um, I was able to go back, um, and take a closer look at our, our health insurance and really our, really our Medicare costs, which are people that are on our medics, the number of retirees that we have. And, uh, you know, those numbers change all of the time. But I was originally had a higher estimate based on a higher number of retirees, and now I'm projecting a few less than I had. Some are, because some are actually still going to be early retirees. And so our number is actually gonna be closer to fifty-seven than sixty-three, which is good news. And so I've reduced this here too. Um, and this is a number that you shouldn't substantially see a change in. The rate increase is already built in for half the year. And we should know who's going to retire, basically, right, and become eligible. So this number should be pretty solid for next year. And so based upon those reductions, I mean, it's not net-net, because there's ads, right? There, there's additions to the budget now, but so this is where we're at budget-wise, this, you know, we're off by eight cents. So on this next page, we'll get into it just a little bit clearer and I'll elaborate on some of the things that I was saying, which is so we started out with two forty, which is what I was talking about. And then we went back and made sure all the numbers are as close to actual as they possibly can be, right? At this moment, we have every data point that we could have for the most part. So last week, um, we got official notification that our fire chief, Bill Kessler, will be retiring in December. And so he obviously, um, makes a certain amount. He also has a certain amount of time and accruals that will have to be paid. He also is currently in a regional agreement with Blackstone, in which we would have received revenue related to um, continuing that agreement. So hit this budget reduction, these numbers are also from Bill. Um, he's, we've provided different scenarios, but the scenario that I put in the budget now for you to consider is that we hire the deputies, the deputies still in the budget, we hire them at July one. And when we get to January, it would drop back to part-time like it is once a chief is hired, right? That's this proposal, which is your existing staffing method. Bill has provided other options related to staffing, mostly keep the deputy full-time and keep a full-time chief, right? He is also recommending a salary of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the new chief. And so that is in this number. Um, what's not in this number um, is just the accruals for Bill. Those are in benefits. That's why I said I've been looking at it pretty closely and to see. And so when he does retire in December, there'll be, you know, a certain amount of money that will have to be paid out, and that's where it will be, right? So, um, that is the story for this savings here. And then the library, we just talked about, the eight fifty-seven, right, was what the nine hours that were budgeted. Um, they've also, um, voted to use fifteen thousand dollars in state aid, right, which is revenue, not a reduction. So their budget went from ninety-six to eighty-seven. Um, I talked about potentially cutting this reserve for negotiations forty-five thousand. Um, I was, based upon these other reductions, we're able to reduce it only by twenty-seven, which so we'll still leave you with forty-seven, which is, you know, seventeen thousand dollars more than we, or twelve thousand than we normally have. So that's still something, that's something. Um, and all these other things remain, uh, building remains, the hearing, this hearing, this money remains, um, the park stuff remains. Um, the change to Medicare, I just talked about, there's sixty-three there. Merzda's reduction of eighty-five is right here, and then streetlights, we talked about, this is the savings based upon what I had budgeted. So that brought us actually to about two thirty-eight, and I was set about two forty. So we're pretty close last meeting. And so at this moment, the budget is balanced. Um, I'm not anticipating any major changes, uh, at this point. Now, uh, you're right. Now, you certainly can consider other options and alternatives. If are, there are things in here you would prefer not to. Not to reduce or other areas to look at, but that is your purview to do so, right? These are just my recommendations um, for you to consider.
Can I repeat what I heard about the fire department? So yeah, so Chief Kessler's going to retire when this is retirement date?
December twenty-second.
Okay. So uh, what does next fiscal year look like for the staff? For the police department? Cause it sounded like.
Fire department.
You mean the fire department?
Yeah, the fire department. So we're going to hire a part-time uh, chief?
No. So. We res- we are in a, we are in a regional agreement and we received a grant. Um, to facilitate this regional agreement and. I don't know, help two towns build fire departments, right? So one of the, last fiscal year, Blackstone added a deputy position, right? They funded theirs in their budget. We had planned to fund ours or try to fund ours with that grant, right? So our original proposal that had this position in it was offset by that grant, right? So that's still happening, like the increase for the deputy position will still be offset by the grant. So the true cost of adding the deputy at a hundred thousand and benefits at twenty-two-five is really just thirty thousand dollars, right, for this next year. Now, Bill will only be on staff, right, until December. And so that means we would have to start our recruitment for the next chief in November, right? Um, and hopefully promote someone to chief in, to promote or hire someone to chief. For January when Bill is done and then we would, you would make the choice not. To make, so before we get the grant position for this full-time deputy, it was a part-time position. It's a part-time position right now, right? The reason to bring it online now and with the grant is for this transition for Bill, which we knew was coming, right? So both towns are doing basically the same thing, right? And so that will get, this will get us from September to December with more time for him to, the person to get promoted and learn. Under Bill, right, to take over potentially, or maybe to help us find time. And then in January, you can either choose, Bill would love for you to keep a full-time deputy and to hire a chief, but I just don't think that's reasonable at this time. I mean, you certainly can consider it, um, but my recommendation is this one, that you hire a chief, go back to part-time deputy, right, until circumstances change. So.
What is the part-time position we're talking, a part-time deputy chief?
It's part-time deputy right now.
Okay, it's part-time. What's a part, what, what, what does that mean, like a deputy?
The second opinion for the chief, right?
Right, so during this last agreement that we have been doing, they are basically the person serving in the position while Bill is either in either community, right? Someone needs to be in command.
Okay, so this, this was the coverage for Bill splitting his time to some degree, right?
Yes, the creation, the, the need for the position, the creation for the need of it basically came out of this agreement.
What happens with the agreement with Blackstone upon Bill's retirement?
So it will cease. We had, either town has the ability to um, remove from the agreement within thirty days notice, which we would do, right? Or they would do, obviously, or so at that point. Uh, so I'm anticipating that they won't fund the second half of the year, right? So there's a reduction in the revenue side, I wanna say it's thirty-seven thousand. Um.
Uh, I'm sorry, do you, you're assuming that? Who won't fund the second half of the year?
Well, Blackstone.
Okay, so you, you're, you're assuming that they're gonna enact their thirty-day notice?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So from our standpoint, we need to determine. Right, right. So we need to determine going forward for Menden. Do we need a full-time fire chief and a full-time deputy chief, two positions or the one?
I don't think, we don't need a, we don't need a deputy chief if we have a full-time chief.
Right, right. And then that will drive the financing of it.
Right.
If you make that decision.
Right.
Which. I think it's what Kim's recommending.
Well, right, so if, if Bill was here, he would be better able to explain to you the need for the deputy position. Um, I mean, it's near and dear to his heart. It's one of the things I think that came out of the recommendation when we did the fire study and. All of that um, for keeping it, right? Um, and so he can certainly talk to you about the value of it, so you can feel comfortable with the sort of continuing to include it after January, right? Um, so the reduction, just so you know, we would have received seventy-five thousand dollars from Blackstone for the services related to fire, so I'm, I've cut that in half. To thirty-seven.
I have a quick question, just cause.
Just real quick, Kim, if, if, if we were to go with Bill's recommendation, as you laid it out, our current budget doesn't support that though, right? We would need to find funding to continue to full, have a full-time chief and a full-time.
Right, I did, right, I did not include. Full-time deputy after January.
Yeah, that's an STM discussion if we choose to go that with that staffing structure, right?
Yeah, to me, I feel like that's a decision that you can make with a little bit more data, a little bit later in the year, right?
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Kim, just a question came up, uh, the, the Blackstone shared agreement. That, what, what portion of Bill's salary did that cover? Does it have?
So. Well, the way that they, the agreement is actually structured, it's not just for Bill's salary, it's some portion of the salary, but also for overages related to the coverage. The coverages that we have to incur because Bill is working over there, right?
Sure.
And so um, it, we can allocate it however we see fit, right? So just as an example, you know, part of the reason that we applied for that grant and received it, right? And then we split it with Blackstone is because when he had, when he had anticipated this agreement, right, was based on. You know, a certain number of hours and a certain amount of coverage and then in actuality, once we got into it, Bill was working sixty hours a week. And he couldn't be in two places at once and then so Blackstone hired a deputy and all of this. So they actually went from, you know, our estimate was gonna be seventy-four thousand to them actually, you know, already. Basically owing ninety-seven thousand for just this fiscal year, right? And so they were able to use their portion of the grant that we split to, to cover that. They've already paid us, right? So they, we used the, the grant since we received it to cover theirs and then they also sent us the additional amount of thirty-five basically to cover it for this year. So next year, if we're starting clean again, right? It's seventy, right, it's seventy-five, um, but I mean, we're not anticipating, right, that we're actually, we'll, you know, we'll get half, right? Hopefully. And if not, then we'll figure something else out too, right? I mean, if I can, I'm at, I mean, Bill is, Bill has every intention of seeing this commitment all the way through to December, which happens to be his. Five-year completion of his contract with Menden, which is the commitment that he made when he came here. So.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have any other questions? Kim, anything else you wanted to elaborate on?
No, I'm happy that we're basically done with the budget on March twenty-second. I'm happy that the school um, really. Was very prompt and considerate and generous and using their one-time funds to help, you know, support our budgets this year. And I'm glad the library also considered doing something similar and. I'm glad to see that this library position is in here and that this deputy is in here. I think this is progress and I hope this makes it to the floor and passes, right? I think it's progress.
So it's been a good year so far. I'm happy with a lot of things.
Don't jinx it.
Nope, nope, knock on wood. All right. Thanks, everybody. Um.
I'll stop sharing if we're done with it.
Yeah, so we're gonna jump into executive session now. Um, I don't think you need to adjourn your meeting.
Before we go to executive session, um, isn't there something on there about the budget hearing?
Yep.
Okay, so I talked to Mike about this. I, I'm not sure, but I'll just, I'll guess about why. So originally on the budget calendar, I think I had said the April nineteenth. Ultimately, the verbiage in the bylaw says that the FinCom needs to hold a public hearing before town. It doesn't actually, it just has to have a public meeting before town meeting about the budget. So you can pick any date that you want. I had just selected that night, but it is ultimately for the FinCom to choose one. Um, so the last couple of years, we've done them online just like this, right? So you could find any which way, but just, it's not a hearing, so you don't have to worry about notification dates, like formal notifications or anything like that. But you know, you do wanna get it out there in advance to people because they participate and then they watch the recordings, so.
So we have to host a public meeting where we go through the budget in detail like you just did.
Yeah, so the public hearing is the one where like, um.
Kim, one second, you just stop sharing, cause we see Estelle is very weird.
You think I like watching myself? The public hearing is the one where basically the board has already voted on a number that it's gonna send to town floor, right? They're gonna take a vote next meeting and say, this is the budget, right? And then that number goes to FinCom along with all the other articles and then you guys say, yes, we're just gonna support this, no, we're not gonna support this, right? And or fund this this way or fund this that way. So then the two boards together. At, the FinCom has the hearing technically and then just reads the budget and people can ask any questions related to the budget, right? We've also been doing ones similar to that with the warrant. Um, I'd say we do them on the same night, but the warrant is so large. That I don't know that I wanna do that all in one night.
That's usually the moderator's meeting anyway, right?
Yeah, well, it, before it was the moderators, it was.
Hours.
From our office. So um, we used, but it doesn't really matter as long as it happens, right? So um, anyway, you know, pick a date and then it doesn't, doesn't. We, like I said, April nineteenth is the day that I said, just make sure you know that it's gonna happen before town meeting, right? That's all.
Kim, just a question, in terms of the budget, not that I think I have any questions on it, but right now it's, it's at a point where we say it's balanced. But changes could still be made. We don't still have the deadlines we have like with the warrant.
Yeah, you can still change, right? Yeah, you, I mean, you basically at some point need to vote to send a budget, right, to town meeting, right? You could, and you can, cause you can change the budget at town meeting, right? But if, I'm not anticipating any unknown thing at this point, right? We've, streetlights was the last thing I had to decipher. So like unless some strange. You know, change occurs between now and May, we still have time to sort of revisit something if we had to, but like, yeah, basically we're done, right?
I mean, to me, it's, it, it's really the fire discussion and just understanding. You know, the, the FY twenty-four ramifications, the latter half. Yeah. You know what I mean? So that's the only thing that still is rattling around in my head, but it seems reasonable, but just wanna think about it some more.
Yeah. I mean, my only recommendation there would be if we could, if there was a, if you don't wanna fund it potentially in fire. Then maybe take that six months out on the backend and put it in that salad, reserve and negotiations line. That's the only other change I think that would make sense from a planning standpoint, right? So.
The only thing I would say is what if, if we don't intend to have two positions in the latter half FY twenty-four, if that's where we land? Then are we really hiring a chief, a replacement, right?
But what if, you're obviously gonna wanna know what the new chief's recommendation is gonna be around the staffing, right? And you're gonna wanna have some room in the budget to help that, so that, like I said.
I'd like to talk, I'd like to talk to the chief to get his recommendations as we look at a budget, right? Because I think that, that the final positions, the order in which you fill them, what if we? Don't have, as of July one, what if we don't have the deputy? You know, chief in place, what if that turns into something closer to? You know, a transition with Bill and it becomes a single position. What does that do to the finances? That's all. I just wanna, I wanna.
Yeah, like I said, and I think maybe to like, so I, I know I just said it, but may, I was gonna say it a little bit different. I think you'd have more security, you may be a little bit more control over the future of the fire department, right? By not having the funding in that salary line already. Right? Cause you don't know who the new chief is gonna be. You don't know what their new recommendations are gonna be. You don't know, right? And ultimately you have to sort that out, but I mean, realistically, are you gonna have that sorted out by? Second half of next year? Who knows, right? They're gonna come in, who knows, right? So there's a lot of unknowns. I mean, you're basically talking about the shift of potentially sixty thousand dollars from one place to another. Right? The se- se- second half of a salary. Actually, it's not even gonna be sixty, it'd be less because. We're already paying for half of it upfront with this, it'd be less than that. And they're not gonna get a hundred and thirty, they're not getting one thirty. I mean, deputy's gonna get something else, so.
Great. Um, real quick, what is the, what are we gonna do about the FinCom book? I know that Gene used to really take a, a, a big role in there. Has, have we, have we taken that over in past years? How are we handling that?
Yeah, so the last four or five years, Laura has put the book together. Um, basically, or I have basically converted the spreadsheets into PDFs and then put them in order.
Okay, so there's also a letter though, generally that comes from the FinCom, right? So that's something.
Yes, the FinCom writes a letter about the budget. You basically hit the highlights, which are the ones that are on this. Driver's page, right, or whatever you'd like.
There's a lot of praise to me and thanking me a lot.
Some years, it's like four lines. Listen, it's totally personal preference. Um, it's, you know, some, some people choose to read it. At town meeting, some people just are like, it's in there if you wanna read it, right? That's a, a totally up to the person who does it. What I would say is I think it's probably a critical juncture to have Jody. Be preparing the spreadsheet for the ATM, right? Um, for the FinCom so that this, like that is a piece that I normally do, right? That I think is, this is a good transition point with articles and sort of part of process. So I'll, I'll speak to her about that because I, I mean, it's not, it's not difficult work, right? But it's, it's important related to where the funding sources are for the meeting, so.
It's really important. I mean, if, we need to make sure the book's right, or it'll look silly.
Or if you want the book to look different, that's an option.
May I just, a, a quick question? Uh, Kim, Jack Hodgins, quick question, Kim. For, for, for the chief and, and basically the transition plan, which I, I recall he met with us. And spoke to this and what his desire was in terms of a very smooth transition. I, I, I just wanted to know if you could perhaps describe in the, you know, without getting in obviously a personnel decision. Oh, the front of the personnel decision, but if you could describe other, other, perhaps other options around the full-time chief. Part-time deputy, so that hypothetically, if, for example, there would be an internal decision. To say promote or move someone to a position and then a deputy role was then. A part-time or the deputy role was full-time and then a decision was made actually not to make that happen. Could someone revert back then to a part-time position?
So there's a lot of things in that question. So what I would say is this. Um, any vacancy that we have in any critical role and that we have in the town, we are going to go out and do a search for, right? Um, that's a hundred percent happening, whether we have qualified internal candidates or not, or I wish the, it's happening. I recommend it's happening. Doesn't always happen, but I recommend that it happens. Um, part of the problem that Menden has is that we really can't compete. Usually with larger markets and in particularly related to public, well, any of our top administrative positions, we, we can't compete with them. So in fire chiefs, public safety officials in particular, very difficult to find right now. And so it was very difficult, we did two searches to get Bill and we had to go and get him personally and like a knock on his door. So like, I mean, and so I'm not anticipating. That we would be able to go out into the market and compete and get. Something, right? Typically what happens here in Menden is we find talent and then we try to nurture it and support it. And help it grow, right, and get what we can, right? And so if that happens and we happen to find somebody and it's awesome and we can make it happen, great, we consider that, right? That's what we're looking for first, that's the first option, but typically we are pivoting to something else once the time comes. Um, for any number of reasons. And so we gotta, we leave everything on the table, right? And so, right, but we do do a search and we will look to see to be sure, right? That's, that's number one. We need that data to make a decision on. So, and Bill will be part of it. I mean, I'm saying that again, but I assume so.
Yeah, thank you. Thank, thank you for that. And everything you described makes complete sense. And um, I'm not, I'm, I'm staying in my lane as an advisor, understood not to, not to. Not, not, not a principle here for the board, it's a board decision. But I, I, I just wonder what the menu of options may be for the board, including, but not limited to possibility of an acting chief. During this interim period as well, as opposed to a full-time chief. And does that, would that provide a measure of flexibility for the board to? And does that, would that provide a measure of flexibility for the board to make the determination? I I'm just throwing that out there.
So we have used interim chiefs in the past, right? From outside firms, we do consider interims from outside firms all the time for all types of vacancies, right? In the treasurer's office, public works everywhere. Um, I don't know. So there's two things that I'm thinking about in terms of timing. It's like particularly in regards to this one position, which is because I think it's, it's crucial for Bill to be a part of the process and knowing that he has a very specific schedule he likes to keep, that basically sends him out west between May and September. I, we should start the process as soon as Bill has the bandwidth, right? Obviously, we'll, we'll use, probably use a recruiting firm like we've done before, probably MRI out of New Hampshire since they specialize in public work, well, public safety and public works. Um, and we probably, like I said, we probably go out for the, the ideal situation, probably October, November, right? Still have Bill till then. If the day comes and Bill's not here and we don't have someone, then we have two options. And that's like we always do, it's either an internal candidate that we can temporarily appoint as an interim, right? Or an external candidate that we bring in from one of these firms that we pay to, for three months, basically to hold down the fort, right? Um, and so last time when we had this with the fire department, it was a little bit of a different situation because the department itself was in transition. And so we had two different interims for a very long period of time because they were doing a study as well as, you know, sort of sorting out the what's, what's of figuring out the future, sort of like what's happening with public works, right? There's a lot more than just filling the vacancy, so um, you know, I'm optimistic, but I certainly want to make sure we utilize Bill as much as possible while we have him and his expertise here because he's excellent.
Perfect, thank you, and I agree, thank you.
So operationally, FinCom needs to hold a public meeting to discuss and review and vote on the budget, vote on our support of it?
Yeah, you want to, you need to take a, you need to, you preferably are taking that, you can take that vote of support at your next meeting. You can take it, you, you basically want to be having a hearing on a budget, you're supporting, right? If you're not supporting it, then you probably want to bring that back to the selectmen before town meeting, right? That's not like a town meeting, like, because, you know, there's, you know, a lot of talk about whose budget, what budget. It doesn't really matter at that point, if we're not all really unified in the budget, we can have small discrepancies about what got funded or what didn't. But the bottom line, we should be agree upon, like this is how much it's gonna be, right? So and we usually, that should be wrapped up before we do that meeting. And then any of us can answer the questions related to what's in the budget. I usually answer eighty percent of them, right? But anyone can, and same thing with the articles, right? We all should have a general understanding of what's going on, so. I think it's been helpful to have everybody at the same meeting because it's like so much clearer.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I'm not anticipating any difficult meeting for us to get together to vote on support on the budget. Yeah. But operationally, we have to do that, right? So I just want to put something on the books that allows us to do that. That needs to happen after the budget documentation is in a final spot that you guys say it's ready to be voted on.
Yeah, so pro- assume next meeting, which I don't know what our meeting schedule is.
Next Wednesday.
We're, we're off weeks, right? We're off.
Yeah, it'll be next Wednesday.
Yeah, so probably the first meeting in April, the board would vote to finalize the warrant and to finalize the budget, right? And now the FinCom would then meet that week or the following week and say yes, no, or maybe, and then the hearing would be the following week. If the board needed more time and they didn't want to meet next week and they, I don't know, you could still, you, you'd be basically be doing this any day up until the meeting, right? Because we don't print the budget in the warrant that goes out, we just print the articles. So we actually have basically up until when we have to print the books, right, for the budget, so.
I felt like last year we had to meet eighteen million times to approve. I felt like we're going over the warrant a million times and approving a million, approving it a million times. So I'd like to not do that this year.
Yeah, no, we don't have time for that. That's what I kept saying last year, and that's what I'd like, my, we don't need to meet like a hundred times. Like the process is pretty clear, like it, right? And so, but now we're only having, we're having every, we basically meet every two weeks, right? And we, we like said, the calendar has been the same for the budget, we're actually a meeting ahead, but that's kind of cheating because we made this one. But we've one, when one meeting ahead of schedule, right? We're basically would have been done right on schedule. And so even in a potentially difficult budget year, because there really isn't that much, I mean, decision making, once it gets down to the end, you know?
Yeah, to Mike's point though, so I think if you guys set a meeting for not next Wednesday, the one, or or whatever day works for you guys after next Wednesday, to set your meeting to go over and approve, make, figure you're gonna approve the budget and then a week later advertise, advertise the hearing. I mean, we don't advertise it, advertise like it doesn't have to be sent out, but let people know.
Yeah. And I don't, I mean, listen, if we need to have a four hour meeting to do both, go over the warrant and the budget, that's fine, right? That's, we'll do it. I mean, it's, it's remote anyway, so everyone can do it from home. But, you know, we used to say it was a public hearing on a budget, but that's not actually what the language even says. It just says a me, the FinCom will hold a, a meeting bef- public meeting before the town meeting, so that could be at any time.
Hold on one sec.
I just want to, it looks like the fifth is our next meeting based on the calendar, so we don't have something, it might have been adjusted based on us.
Wait, we don't have something next week?
Yes, I don't think we committed to dates beyond.
Well, I, I got the fifth and the nineteenth on the calendar in April, so.
Okay, but, but that, okay, but hang on, so.
Yeah, we sort of kinda.
No, but then the board of health moved their meetings to be.
This should, it should be right, the, so we should be the first and third.
But that's what, we're the first and third in April.
We should be, but we might not even need both, so we'll see, right?
But there's nothing committed to you, there's nothing.
That's my point.
There's nothing committed to next week. I mean, I'm sorry, on the fifth, we haven't, we gotta pick meeting dates when we come back. Let's worry about the meeting days when we come back.
Let's, well, just, let's just assume it's the fifth for this moment.
Well, no, I I don't, I don't want to.
Oh, you want, you want to check their dates, fine, right?
No, I know their dates, they're meeting right now, like this threw me off because we added this date.
Oh.
Because we were already in sync and they moved theirs to get it back in sync, so I don't want to have to ask them to move it again.
That's, that's fine, I'm just saying, I heard first and thirds, if we're doing first and third, second and fourth, we can't, we gotta clarify, that's different than every other.
Yeah, I mean, for a while we just claimed a day, so.
So, so this chair and this chair respectively, Kim, uh, would make sense, just I just put a fine point on it that we, there should be a contemporaneous joint meeting so that everyone's on the same page. Then come and board a selectman for the next, for the next round and do the budget hearing at that, is that what I'm hearing? So that all questions could be answered consistently with one voice when questions arise.
So.
Does that make sense?
Yes, so I would say that, which is if our next meeting is the fifth or the twelfth, whichever day turns out to be or some other day, we should plan to meet again, just like we're meeting right now. The board will go through the budget one last time, FinCom should be present, right? Or available or whatever, the select board will vote on this budget as whatever, and then the FinCom can then have a separate meeting on their own if they'd like to deliberate on their own about the budget, right? But you could also just vote it right then too. I mean, that's another option, so.
Uh, uh, understood, I I meant, uh, all, I agree with all that, Kim. I meant in terms of your availability and being efficient about it. So to the extent that there are people in the finance committee who have a question, that'd be their opportunity. You'd be available at the board of selectmen meeting.
Oh, yeah, I, listen, I try, you know, I try.
I know, I know, I know.
I try to be everywhere all the time.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make it work, like I, I usually try for Wednesdays anyway, right? So I, I try to keep them open if I can, so.
All right, so on the fifth of the twelfth, the select board is going to have a meeting to finalize all of the decisions around the budget and the warrant. After, we have to have a meeting after that operationally for the FinCom to vote on a recommendation for the budget.
Yeah, so you might not, so let's assume we do have this.
Is there, is there a reason we can't meet on the twenty ninth, next Wednesday, to have this last meeting, just to get this out of the way?
Not meet another Wednesday in a row, like seriously? Do you really? I will, but I'm just.
I'm just saying that if we wait two weeks now, you're at the twelfth, I mean, I suppose it puts it to the nineteenth.
I'm assuming we're meeting on the fifth because it's, we usually are, that we usually are the first and third, okay? And I'm sorry if the board of health is in conflict, but we gotta pass the budget, right? So I don't want to, I, here's the other problem. I don't want to push it out too far because they have to have another meeting just to talk about funding sources related to the warrant, which is also sort of a long meeting in itself, right? So they need to move on to that too, and that, they need time to do it. So typically, if you were following my advice, my schedule, we would be meeting on the fifth. You would be coming to the meeting, the board would be voting on the budget. You would then vote that night on the budget as well as the number. You would then have a FinCom meeting probably the next week to go over the warrant articles and the funding sources or, and then you would have a public hearing the following week. If you haven't decided on the art, the funding sources and the warrant articles yet, for whatever reason, you can still do that up until the date of the town meeting, right? You still have a couple of weeks there, that would be the normal schedule. Um.
But, but just get back to the fifth, if we do something on the fifth and we were remote, Lonnie, be allowed the board of health to use this room?
It has nothing to do with that, it has to do with me going and going to help meetings that I haven't been able to go to. So and and no, the, the sequence has not been, this, this is an added meeting. The sequence would have been next week would have been a regular meeting.
The twenty ninth would have been?
Yeah, because we met last Wednesday.
Yeah, but we don't, this not, we don't normally have five weeks in a month, we typically, so I used to send out calendar reminders, it would have been the first and the third. It hasn't been that way because I haven't been picking the dates. Um, and we did add this meeting, I'm open to whatever day you'd like. So go back and find out what their schedule is and we can adjust any, as long as it's a Wednesday, we'll make it work, right? The meeting, we'll make it work, so find that out and then we'll pick a day.
Sure.
I think that's fine. It's, as far as we're concerned, whether it's the fifth or the twelfth, doesn't make much difference as long as the FinCom is there and they vote that night, right? If they were gonna meet the twelfth anyway, makes no difference, the, it really just becomes, there's to have the hearing on the nineteenth, perfect. And then they need to do the.
We're gonna, we're gonna pick a date later, we're gonna move on to the, um.
If you need help with the calendar.
The twelfth is late. Like, we have to do it next week, we might have to do it next week, to Lonnie's point.
Just, we can adjust it later, I, I, it's not, not, whatever, it doesn't matter. Let's just, um, all right, any other questions regarding, Mike, do you have any other questions as far as what you need to get for your dates?
No, if I do, I'll just email them, just.
Okay. Back, anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, all set.
All right, um, thank you. Let's go to, um, so I'm gonna move that we go into exec and anything else from the board? Kim, do you have anything else before we jump in?
No.
Move that we go into executive session, purpose number three. Pursuit of the Master of Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One A Three, Discuss Strategy With Effect. To let collective bargaining in open meeting may be detrimental, have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public party. Says Highway Union and Town Hall Union, I'm assuming it's just town, uh, highway?
It's both.
Okay, hold on, oh, I got you, uh, I'm gonna install that, yep, got it for Town Hall and Highway. Uh, we will reconvene back into regular session to discuss meeting dates. Roll call boat needed. All's in favor? Can you, oh, hi?
Brugge sigh.
Shalai. All right, now is, where's Mike Macaro, is he on here? Am I just bringing in Mike?
He's already here, so if you're gonna send us, take us to a room.
I'm gonna go to a room. Hold on a second.
You gotta empty this room.
Yeah, I know, um, so the, do you, we're, we're gonna do highway first or town hall first?
We're gonna do both at the same time, they both involve the same thing.
Okay, hold on. Dang it. Because Laura created the meeting, she's the only one that can create breakout rooms.
Okay, well, just kick everybody else off the meeting.
Could we create a new room and just move everybody there along?
We wouldn't, we got people from joining it.
I can just create a new room.
Yes, we'll have to create a new.
Give me one sec, I'm gonna pa- what do I? Oh, I can just camera it. Okay, one second, guys. Uh, yeah, just in a minute, hold on. Meeting.
You start talking, I shouldn't.
Oh, of course, that's not working. Mike, what's your email address?
Um, M M A C C A R O at M H T L dot com.
All right, sending you the new link.
Okay.
You can jump out of this one.
All right, I'll see you in a minute.
Think this works, right?
Is the camera off in the room?
Hmm, yeah, hold on, but the microphone isn't. Oh, who's logged in here? Was this just logged in when you guys came in? Oh, my God. No wonder I was seeing her, this is Gail's login.
That may be my fault, I just turned it on and it was already on.
Hold on. We're deleting this.
Um.
Hold on. It's the day twenty third.
One second.
Uh, and that was, uh, M M, got it. All right, here's the new one, just text Mike and tell him to use the one I just sent.
Okay, so I'm hanging up.
Yep. Hang up.
That's how easy that could have been. I was still in on that computer. Thank God.
But you were muted, right?
Thankfully. All right. Thank you, Kim is coming back. Okay, we're back. Let me just open up the door.
This shaky camera is really nauseating.
Is it?
When he got up, it vibrated. You know what I mean? Like it.
Yeah, from the floor. Yeah. Yep. That's right. All right. Okay, so the last item is the discuss. We discussed the budget hearing. We want to argue over meeting dates again. Listen, you know something? In our reality, if we just want to go to the fifth and continue this to get through the rest of the budget season, let's not disrupt everything. I can always catch up on what the board. Jack always sends me the minutes of the Board of Health and then I can always catch up. We can maybe get back on a weird, a different thing if you guys don't mind. Once we get through these next couple of weeks.
Do you want me to bring up the fact that I hate?
Well, hang on one sec. We couldn't hear you. Go ahead.
It doesn't matter to. I have no preference on the Wednesday date. And I don't think that they need five weeks of lead time. It's like, it's not. It doesn't really matter for us if it's the fifth or the 12th, right? As long as the warrant is almost done and with council is doing their part, we're basically coming back with finalized documents, right? So it doesn't really matter for us in terms of time crunch. So whatever it has to be is fine.
Well, unless you guys want to take two weeks off. I mean, I'm totally game for that. And then we would just be in the odd rotation of the 12th and then the next one would be the ninth.
We'll just find out when the meeting that health is and then let us know.
No, their meeting is would be next.
Tonight.
Their meetings tonight. So then it would be on the fifth.
They're doing every other week and not like second and fourth.
Well, I don't know if it's second and fourth person. It's just every other. From whatever time they think. Right? So I just know that right now they're meeting. Yeah, that's actually where that chat message was. I thought the chat message was coming from. Yeah, here. I think she was in both. So I think the chat. So then she started asking me about something on the Board of Health and I'm like, why are you asking me this right now? So anyhow, so that's that. So the 12th.
I will meet. Yeah, I'll meet whenever people need to meet.
Yeah, right. Whenever.
I leave Wednesday is open because.
So let's just.
I won't even bring up moving it off Wednesdays this time. I won't mention it.
Let's, let's, we'll take two weeks off. We'll go to the 12th and then the 19th. Kim, if you want to send the invites out or have Laura send them out. And then we'll go from there. And if we need to add a meeting in between, just add the meeting.
I might not be there on the 12th.
Wow, get out of town. You just said you want the 12th.
Well, you just remember that it's school vacation week. But you know what? I'll make, I'll do my best. I can't predict what the background will be, but I'll do my best to be there. Yeah, we'll see. I haven't booked anything yet.
To that point though, the one asked from FinCom Kim was that you'd be there, right?
Yeah, but for their meeting, right? For the budget, right?
And I think just remotely, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I work around FinCom's schedule too. I mean, they probably have the most.
I tell you what, let's not pick any dates right now. Let's just, we're gonna, just let us know what we've all got open Mondays. Let, let, sorry, Wednesdays, let Mike have his input in on too. All right, we're not picking anything. Okay, last item is consider appointment of the interim highway spare, which I believe we're not going to make a decision on at the moment. We're going to continue that until at least the next time or down the road. We're not going to make a decision. Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Anything else? Anything else, guys? All right, I will take a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? All right, thanks, Kim.
Welcome.
Thank you, guys.